Mr. John Breeden?
Here.
Ms. Bonnie Height?
Here.
Ms. Janie Rhodes?
Here.
Mr. Stephen Greenwood?
Here.
Chairman Don Wagner?
Here. Okay, the next item is the review and adoption of the meeting agenda. Do you mind having any comments on the agenda? If not, do I have a motion to approve?
Say it again.
Mr. Edger?
Mr. John Breeden?
Aye.
Ms. Bonnie Height?
Aye.
Ms. Janie Rhodes?
Aye.
Mr. Stephen Greenwood?
Aye.
Chairman Don Wagner?
Here. The next item on the agenda is the review and approval of the minutes. Does anyone have any comments on the minutes? If not, do I have a motion to approve?
Mr. Chairman, I have a motion to approve the minutes.
Second?
Second.
May I have a motion approved in seconded? Mr. Edger, would you call the roll, please?
Mr. John Breeden?
Aye.
Ms. Bonnie Height?
Aye.
Ms. Janie Rhodes?
Aye.
Mr. Stephen Greenwood?
Aye.
Chairman Don Wagner?
Aye. The next item is the public comment period. The audience has an opportunity to speak on any subject other than the public hearing for up to three minutes unless you're speaking for over then you have five minutes. If anyone wishes to speak this time, please come forward to the microphone and state your name and address. If no one wishes to speak, then I will close the public comment period. Okay, the next item on the agenda is the public hearing or CUP 0220, show and tape. Mr. Edger, please.
Good evening. For your consideration this evening is conditional use permit 02-20, the applicant's or Todd show Kelly Tate, the address 6585 Mount Olive Coho Road. Back one. Use the aerials.
I think it's just these.
That's okay. They are requesting a conditional use permit in order to construct a 24 foot by 56 and a half foot attached accessory dwelling for a family. The proposed accessory dwelling would be constructed on the rear of the palace and would not be seen from the road. The property is located at 6585 Mount Olive Coho Road. The tax map parcel number is 53-1-1. The property consists of 10.68 acres and its own agricultural conservation. The property, this map here is the property location as it sits with the adjoining properties. You can see large lots, pretty good distance from everyone. Could the next one please? Again, here's the aerial views. So we did a good overview of how the property is situated, where the house is located, and the impact that the accessory dwelling could have. Here you've got your zoning map showing that this agricultural zone and how the lots are laid out and the residential nature of the area. And this is your site plan. Again, you see that in the packet. You can see exactly what's going on with the property. Now we have a couple of photos that is looking out from the front of the house. Just surrounding the area, looking down the road. Look down the back. And actually that's that. Proof that we actually posted the signs or the conditional use permit. If you would just bring up the aerial. So staff has evaluated the application and five to ten compliance with the requirements for a conditional use permit. And based on our research, we do recommend that the planning commission approve the conditional use permit 02-20. I believe the applicants are here. So if you have any questions of them, they're available. And if you have any questions of staff, we're here to answer.
First, the applicant have any comment?
No.
Okay, Tom, if you might respond, commission every question to the applicant.
Coming down the road, is it on? I guess coming from the trail, the church right at that church, is it on the right or the left side?
It's on the right hand side.
Right hand side, yes. Oh, so you're near the, where that big watermelon farm is?
That's exactly right.
Oh, okay.
There's one to bear where it is. There is one house in between us.
Okay, all right, thank you.
I wanted to ask Mr. Edger if you would read out what the conditions are that staff recommends. I think mine is cut off. I only have one, and I think there may be more than one.
Yeah, the staff, like I said, we recommend a favorable decision along this application. The accessory dwelling shall be occupied by immediate family.
Okay.
That is the condition.
So I have a couple of questions if I may.
Yes.
We've considered a similar cup previously in a different set of circumstances, but it was almost a year ago. And there were three conditions for that, which I don't think were unreasonable. One was to be occupied by the immediate family. One was a dwelling could not be increased in size. And then the third was contingent on approval by the Virginia Department of Health, which, which may not be necessary in this case. So then, so then I would point to no increase in the size, and then I had a question. And that's for discussion by other commissioners. Is accessory dwelling under the ordinance says that when it is attached, it cannot exceed a certain percentage of size of the original dwelling? And I think that was one half. So I wanted to ask about the size of the original dwelling and the size of the accessory structure.
That's okay. We did evaluate that. It does meet the, it does meet all of the zoning requirements for an accessory attached dwelling.
The size of the house, of the accessory dwelling is 20 by 56 or 58, which is about 1,368 square feet. I can't tell from that other house whether that's the size, but what the ordinance says is that if it's attached to the home, the accessory dwelling, it cannot be more than one half of the size of the primary. And I just can't tell from the depictions, and I don't, I just want confirmation of the current size of the dwelling and the size of the accessory dwelling.
Yeah, do you have?
Yeah. I'm sorry. I just, I'm gonna answer my question.
You want me to be consistent from applicant to applicant?
Yes.
And then one we did a year ago was the one that had already been built.
Uh, now, thought now.
Some of the condition, the reason we did, we didn't want.
And was in close proximity to the neighbors as well.
And it was a separate building too. It was garage.
Right.
And it wasn't attached.
So that's, I just want to make the observation to see if the commission wants to, again, it may be that we don't need approval by the Virginia Department of Health. I see that there are lots of individuals in here. I guess only one would be, is that there would be a condition that the dwelling may not be increased in size. Depending on what the folder says, they put them out of compliance, so it couldn't be anyway. And I wouldn't recommend the condition if it's not necessary, if it couldn't be done anyway.
Yeah, I know Sherry's got that somewhere.
Okay.
She's gonna find that.
What is the height of the accessory dwelling? Is also one story?
Yes.
Thank you.
One question I had over the way, will there be a separate bath and kitchen in the addition?
Yes. That's why it has to get an additional use permit because it will be an accessory dwelling, which by definition has that stove, stove being the key one in this.
Is there floor plan besides just this little depiction of the area?
Yeah, Sherry.
Oh, that's what she meant.
Yeah, she meant to get a folder for it. Any other questions?
Existing building was two stories. Is it just one story?
Just one story.
It is.
Okay.
She said, sorry, tell them the picture.
Well, it was also hard to see in front of the buildings.
So the living area, the garage and the utility room is 2612, so 50% of that is 1306. The addition comes up to 1356. I did not include the two porches.
And maybe we, so it is less than 50%.
Okay, you, for the porches on the accessory?
No, they're on the main, the main house. They've got a screen porch and a front porch.
And you would have ordinarily included those?
I did not include those in the square footage.
That's not living space.
So what did you say?
Yeah, I'm sorry, I'm not following.
The square footage of the house is 2612. So 50% of that is 1306. The addition is at 1356.
So 1306 is half, 1356 is more than 50%.
Yeah, 50 square feet over.
Right. So my question is, are we permitted under the ordinance to approve it with the 50 square feet over?
We probably need to reduce it to the 50%. I can't remember if that included any kind of porch or anything.
Under the ordinance, as far as the 50% goes, we would have the option of including the entire square foot of the house.
That's why I was asking if the porches.
And if we threw the porches in, it takes it off.
That's part of the house, that would, because it's part of the structure.
And I use living area because my head, everything doesn't say this, but under that particular ordinance, because you were building a, an addition to the, you would take the entire square footage of the house, the footprint of the house. In this case, whatever.
The two porches are 240 and 320.
So you'd add another 500 square feet, so you would have it within one half of the.
Thank you.
I have a question.
At the country hall.
Yeah, I'm okay, I'm just asking.
Do they have a little medum or whatever? I don't see whether it should be an issue. Now, anybody have any further comments?
Uh, no sir.
Do I have a motion to approve?
We have to have a public hearing. Yes, public hearing.
That's okay.
This is the public hearing.
That's time. I will open this up to a public hearing. Does anyone wish to speak? If so, we have three minutes. If you're 54 or less, if you wish to speak, please come forward and state your name and address.
You'll end the lot if you want.
I'm good. I'm good. If there's no one, I will, did you have a question?
No.
If there's no one wishing to speak, I will close the public hearing. Thank you. But you all have any more discussion? If not, and does anyone?
Mr. Chairman, a motion to approve that we approve this conditional use permit without a second motion.
Right, then, motion and second, Mr. Edger, would you call the roll?
Mr. John Breeden?
Aye.
Ms. Bonnie Height?
Aye.
Ms. Janie Rhodes?
Aye.
Mr. Stephen Greenwood?
Aye.
Chairman Don Wagner?
All right, next, item on the agenda is whole business.
Yes.
All right, thank you. Have a great evening. Thank you all.
Thank you.
The next item is the whole business ordinance, then what? Okay. Mr. Edger?
Good evening, commissioners. As y'all are very well aware, we have begun the community outreach and public participation. The draft ordinance was sent by direct email to the initial stakeholders, was about 20. And then we did another blast of a couple hundred emails that we had. The draft was also sent to each one of the county boards, the BZA, of course y'all, for the supervisors, historical architectural review board, weapons board, various stakeholders, including the sheriff and control. And the indication that staff said now I requested that comments be returned to me by July 31st. And they have, I have received a few comments. Most of them being captured in parking lots of various places around Food Lion. Now just eat at my desk. But I'm teasing. The, the biggest concern so far that come up is what we anticipated is the size of subdivisions, you know, what our minimum law requirements are going to be in various subdivisions. Several alternatives have been offered up. Beyond that, most, everything's been verbal, but I've been promised by a number of different stakeholders that they will have comments before the end of the month. And we're going to take those comments. We're going to identify the key areas that seem to be most popular, and then I probably will approach y'all for consensus on having a public forum, not a public hearing, but a public forum that gives the planning commission, board of supervisors, a chance to listen to the community and have an open discussion back and forth. I think that's really critical to how we forward to this draft. But that's about where we are. Do y'all have any particular questions about the process so far?
Does anyone have any questions at this point? I would like to come again, and again, the development a little bit. When we go to a public forum, I would like the presentation of the major changes in the ordinance, such as the, by the way, 66 combined, 66 and 86.
Yeah, I plan to, one of the thoughts is, once I see what's going on, but I will give a presentation on the development, not just the critical areas, because one of the biggest issues, I'll call them complaints, and they're justified. One of the biggest complaints is I have not provided a crosswalk between the old or the current ordinances and the draft ordinances. So it's very difficult for people to see what happened here and where we made the changes. But since we did such a wholesale change in the structure and the format by combining 66 with, you know, into the zoning ordinance, as y'all may remember, we spent a lot of time at the beginning trying to do crosswalks and match it up, and it became almost impossible to follow. And so that's one of the things I want to present, is to try to help people understand that this is a significant change in format and readability and, because all of y'all did a whole lot of work to make this thing go. So, but yes, that's the plan for that, is to help everyone understand the magnitude of the changes.
And Mr. Chairman, if I may, I'm a big fan of the crosswalks, and originally had asked for one, and I concur that it was, it's impossible to try to do that. So, you know, a marvelous concept, it would have been magnificent, but it would have been more confusing than just.
It turned into a.
But I think there are significant changes in there that we can identify.
Yes, absolutely.
And that's what I like, so. All right, do you have any other questions? All right, the next item is new business. And I put this in there for commissioners' comments, just in case any of us have any questions or any comments, any issues that they'd like to bring up during this period of time, and I would definitely recommend that in the meeting. Do any of you have any comments at this time? That's not a good one, sure. All right, on June 12th, Mr. Edger noted that commissioners via email that all references adult entertainment, sexual orientation, this was head and removed from the draft ordinance. He further advised that, that, that was a staff decision. Personally, I am relieved that the proposed ordinance was removed from the draft ordinances. However, this should be a decision by the PC once information is provided, indicating sufficient opposition to the ordinance. While we have not necessarily held formal votes on approval of the various ordinances, I believe due to controversy with this particular ordinance, the planning commission has an obligation to formally remove the ordinance from the draft ordinance. Therefore, we entertain a motion to remove proposed ordinance 86-60, and not entertainment, adult, and all references there too, from the draft of the proposed ordinance. Do you have your motion, or do any of you have questions or comments?
Uh, Mr. Chairman, if I may? I don't know if this is necessary, but I don't see the harm in doing something, what I would propose is to, I will make a motion to endorse staff's decision to pull that draft. Again, we, we, a majority was against putting it in the first place. So I think staff felt very comfortable in taking that, that it was, it was with the wishes of the commission, that I'd like to formally endorse and support staff's decision to pull that. And that's my motion, Mr. Chairman.
Do I hear a second of Mr. Breeden's motion?
On second.
I have a motion and a second. Any comments? All right, Mr. Edger, would you call the roll, please?
Mr. John Breeden?
Aye.
Ms. Bonnie Height?
Aye.
Ms. Janie Rhodes?
Aye.
Mr. Stephen Greenwood?
Aye.
Chairman Don Wagner?
Aye. Thank you. I just have an, have an issue with things in the ordinance that we're responsible for, and then the complaint is coming up, not getting our blessing approved. Okay, in the transportation corridor overlay district, Mr. Edger has noted that metal exterior, or what appears to me to be metal exterior studies, has been applied to the walls of the mental warehouse facility on Route 30, 360 at Kennington. The current DCO ordinance, section 86-376, standard of development, item six, they did that building exterior should be visible from Route 30 or about 360. They'll not consist in metal plywood or T111s. Why has this been allowed?
Mr. Chairman, if I may?
Yeah.
About a year ago, we came to the planning commission on this very topic of Kennington. We brought y'all a sample of baked enamel that is a coated metal. It has an exterior coating. We discussed it at the planning commission meeting, that the shiny metal was the real issue, that more than likely if we, the only things we prohibit, and this was a general discussion that we did have with the commission, was if you don't use T111, you don't have to use plywood, but you can use anything else. You can use vinyl, you could use plastic, you can use a lot of things that look a lot worse than the baked enamel type coated site. In fact, we still have the sample that we brought to the commissioners' attention, we still have in the office. So that's why it was allowed. We look at that as a coated material, a covered metal material, as opposed to vinyl.
I will recall your comments. I will recall you said, and you don't like shiny metal.
I do not.
But I do not, we all recommend, I'm wrong, please. I do not recall that we gave it an audit approval to using this other material that you showed, Breeden showed, but not.
I don't, I don't recall. I mean, I remember vaguely the discussion, but I can't tell you whether there was a approval, formal approval on it. I absolutely agree that it's a coating that, you know, probably looks nice, and it's, it gets you where you want to be in terms of not having the shiny, glaring impact.
And if I may, the ordinance that's quoted says metal. And if it's coated, it doesn't prohibit a coated metal or any other type of substrate. And so for allowing it is, I went with the baked enamel coating.
The board of supervisors in about 2008 asked for this ordinance, the transportation corridor overlay district. The board, there were, was a lot of discussion about what should be done, how it should be done, setbacks, a number of items. But the board absolutely, because of the metal buildings on 360, that they were absolutely disgusted with, because they asked to put, they wanted to get rid of the metal buildings. In 2014, the planning commission did another study or review, and they accepted, or they agreed with that previous ordinance. They made some changes, but they did not change the notice of, or the landscaping requirements. So I bring this up because I don't think, if we're, if we're going to make ordinances, I don't think we should be overlapping those ordinances, just because you don't like shiny metal.
Well, neither, the ordinance is prohibiting shiny metal or metal.
The ordinance is metal.
Right.
Not shiny, or not black metal or blue metal, it's metal.
As the exterior. They could have put vinyl instead of using the coating, the baked enamel coating, which I personally don't like the vinyl because it doesn't look up. Sir?
I don't like vinyl either, but my point is. I don't like vinyl either, but my point is we should come and change the ordinance. I'm not, I'm not objecting, I'm not gonna say we should overturn this or anything, but I do think in the future, maybe if we have ordinances, we should import the ordinances as well, unless there's a good reason. And to give you a little bit of benefit of the doubt, the problem or the reason in this case, because the building might next to it is staying.
Architectural consistency is.
And this building permit came out back then, it was not a new building permit. They got the authorization to do this, like, what, ten, fifteen years ago?
Well, this was.
No, the.
They already had.
What else?
For that part, that's why.
Or the commercial, but the TCO, no, Mr. Wagner's absolutely right. The metal is prohibited. We sat down, I had.
I don't. The colored metal and we said that was okay and the board did not say, our board did not say we don't like the coated metal, so.
Your predecessors, that approved it, that this.
I've been here for twelve years and none of my predecessors says that.
This was two thousand and fourteen, you were here in two thousand and twelve, I believe, so you were on that board. But none of us.
Right. I don't mind the coated metals. Mr. Chairman?
My point, Stephen, is that we should not be approving things that are not approved in ordinance without, you may.
But it doesn't mean, right.
This group may approve it at that time. I don't recall.
Right, it could have been before you were on the board too, so. It could have been before you were on this board too.
Oh, it was.
Right, so.
Mr. Chairman, so would you, would you check the material being used in the draft ordinance that the planning commission has weighed in on to see it is in compliance with that draft as well as existing ordinance?
Yes, part of the draft ordinance was a direct result of the, to clear up.
The draft ordinance says that the zoning shall be approved by the zoning.
Right, because the architectural problems that, that can keep coming up and we usually try to go for consistency there, so they would need that draft ordinance.
Okay, next item. Also, section eighty-six, three seventy-six, item two states that publicers fifteen-foot of wet shall be provided in the style of the area property zone B-one, B-two, or Y, that is joint property zone A-C-R-R, R-C-R-R-one. The type of materials or vegetation required are spelled out in the ordinance. While the real house project is not very specific enough, the residences located less than one hundred feet from these units have had significant vegetation in both and for the past several months have been exposed to active construction sites. In such situations, this is my words, we should encourage the developers to either provide a final buffer or temporary buffer for protection of the adjoining property. We should consider requiring temporary screening of buffers during construction of such facilities in the future. I also note this period that no insulation was being installed in the exterior walls of these storage facilities. Are these units required to be climate controlled?
And I'll start with the last part about climate control. Most of these are not climate controlled and that would be, that's not so much a zoning issue as it's a building code issue.
So why does it depend on the company?
Well, it depends on what they're going to be used for. If they're going to be climate controlled, then they would require a certain R-value of insulation. One of the problems with these are not a problem, but one of the issues there was the fire suppression system, whether they had to be sprinkled or if they didn't. So the code requires if they're, the kind of building and all that is a building code thing, so you build one way if it's going to be sprinkled, you build another way if it's not going to be sprinkled, but none of that is a zoning issue. That's all building code. So it's going to be completely dependent on those issues as far as insulation and sprinklers and all of that. The, as far as active construction sites and temporary buffers, again, the planning commission is well within their jurisdiction to try to change construction habits and normal construction activity, but that sort of, just initially looking at it, it would seriously increase the cost of development of a commercial project and could definitely, it's a very difficult thing to do. You've got your erosion sediment control, which protects, but as far as putting visuals up, you know, a lot of construction sites, their solution to that is to put up a big chain link fence with black cloth on it, which, you know, and again, that, it's a personal preference. Is that any better than watching the track code, which you're gonna seal the fence anyway, clearing the land? I feel.
I wouldn't know that one right in on the corner and right adjacent to this, this facility, man. I don't know why, but it may well be. But these homes that people just moved into, had all of the vegetation removed and all of a sudden they've got a construction site in front of them and it's been there for six, eight months, I, I, I don't see any justice in that. You know, I think we have a responsibility. It's not indoor, I know it's not required, I understand that, but I think we have a responsibility to do that. Anyway, I don't know. In that fifty-plus years, they're doing the same things, the things you're doing. I don't know, Henry, sometimes I've heard it just costs too much. I have to do that, it costs me too much.
Chairman, why?
We have to be aware of that kind of thing, but at the same time, we've got to protect that.
I just had a quick question. I remember discussing this and I remember discussing it, I think in one of our work sessions. Did we address those concerns in the draft that we proposed?
The discussion is something I'll hold up.
Right, I just don't recall what.
What I was suggesting is that we require that any construction in the TCO come before the planning permission.
Okay, gotcha.
We, we walked away from that, but even so, I, I, I'll just let you know, I have a concern and Stephen, whether you want to board or not, I think the board, let me, let me bring up one other situation first. I have noted over the past several months that parcel twenty-two thirty-nine on Route three sixty A, owned by Kent Holden, appears to be approaching on B dot right away with gravel parking equipment storage area. Also, there's no front yard screening setback and no screening in this property as required in the TCO. This property was purchased in January two thousand and fifteen, but I do not know when the current business was established. Is there any reason that staff cannot now require this property to be alt in compliance? It just happened before you.
Right, and I've actually, you know, Mr. Holdery is on the EDA. We've discussed his property on several occasions. It's a non-conforming business, so, and it's never been interrupted for the two-year period so that we can go in and pull the trigger on it, as he explained to me. But that, that is the whole reason, it's a non-conforming use. But I will tell you that I have encouraged him, you know, I want it pretty, you know, you should do everything you can to make, pay a little track as we can for other businesses in the area.
Yeah, I'll bring these things up because as you all know, I've had a concern with what, the kind of development we've got from how this is. We've got to do better, we can do better. We've got to, we've got to make sure we've got decent ordinances that do what we need to have done. We've got to make sure that we're, we are informed, better informed of some of this development that goes on. If, perhaps if we come about this issue with the many storage units, perhaps we would come up with, recommend that some solutions are done. And I recognize that, as Stephen said, that, that this was approved, I think it was approved after the TCO. The TCO was taken, the other department.
The master plan, I'm sorry, the master plan, the conditional use permit for Kennington, which included the commercial development along three sixty, was approved in two thousand and eight, I believe, two thousand and six.
I think the TCO, as I recall, the TCO approved the property.
Well, the conditional use permit would have superseded if, if the board of supervisors approved a conditional use permit with those items in it, that's the whole point, conditional use permit and exceptions. I, I would have a real issue with making exceptions in our TCO as staff, even through the conditional use permit process, because I do agree that I would like to manage the development along that stretch. You know, I want to encourage certain businesses in that stretch. I think the county, you know, is committed to the commercial development through there and, but it needs to be managed appropriately, but it also needs to be encouraged and as much as possible not discourage the development of these parcels.
Business, now I can agree that business needs to be encouraged, but not all businesses are definitely necessarily want, and that's why this planning commission needs to get staff to practice what's coming in there, what's going on. I don't know how we can say that better than just to say that we don't want that car to go down any more than it is. We want that car to improve, the improvement of that car, if we improve it, if we enforce it, this is what I said to the board of supervisors, that the mission is a really important thing. If we make that car, if we're, if we enforce things equally, if we require what's needed, businesses are going to be more likely to want to join us and be a part of that. If, if they see ordinance is not being uniformed and enforced, or if they see zoning ordinances are loose, then they're going to respect it. So, yeah, it's a double-edged sword. So all I'm asking is that you, this planning commission, work together to try our best to see that we take kind of development we wanted in this county. That's one reason I didn't want to allow development without, without the permits.
You want the public hearing breach.
Public hearing is what is required, that I don't think we can rely on contract for a development to come in here and run away with what they want to, in disregard what the staff wants.
Yes, Chairman, I have to make a comment.
Yes.
It's also, I agree with you about all that, but the thing is, it's not just that storage facility, it's also that developer of that subdivision. He did not leave the correct amount of buffers either. He built up to the very edge of the property, so really, he's part of, like, and I've talked to several residents in there, because that's my district, they're complaining about him, he doesn't do anything for them, the roads aren't up to standards, the sewer system, the electric, nothing. And like you said, he probably should have had a ten or fifty foot buffer built up back there, anyway, because he knew that the property next to him was commercial, just because it hadn't been pulled at the time, but he didn't do that either. And it's unfortunate, like I said, it is bad for those people and, and like I said, we probably are moving forward, we're gonna have a better landscape and, or newer things, but since that one was already kind of in the works, and they already put something back there, but still it's not enough, like you said, it's so small and the other ones are too close, and they're too close too, and like I said, maybe we can look forward and to put something temporary, like I said, I don't know if a fence with a black cloth is gonna be enough for.
These ordinances are under review, but that doesn't mean we can't.
Tweed them.
Tweed them.
Right. So, they can.
Yep. Then we have to.
One, one thing I would say is, is if the current draft ordinance is not as it should be, we'll sometimes make further improvements, number one. Number two, I, I'm not sure of why we want to have a public hearing for every commercial project in the transportation corridor overlay that we've got staff, and I've not seen any evidence that they're not making the folks comply with the ordinances. In fact, I've heard quite the opposite, that, that they wish the good old days, they want it, that the current staff is forcing the ordinances in a way that pre-said not. So if, if there are instances, I'm not aware of them, that's all I'll say.
Yeah, I understand that, but, you know, I just want to make a strong point that the good strong ordinances have been important to those.
And I would welcome hearing about any new project, I don't think we need to have a public hearing, I would be opposed to that, but being made aware of, of projects that are coming along tight and anyone who has an interest in a particular project, particular parcel, I would think Mr. Ed would welcome them to come down and see what they proposed and all that sort of thing.
If it touches our hands, it's public knowledge anyway, it's spoiled and so, yeah, and I hope you all realize, I try not to keep any secrets from the planning commission. And as development comes in, I do like to share what I know. One of the problems that I do run into though is conjecture. There's a lot of stuff that comes across our desks that maybe, if, could be, and we do not share that until it becomes a preliminary site plan of some, you know, something of substance. You know, part of working on the cop plan and the mass utility plan, which, you know, been heavily involved, I have to look at a crystal ball and figure out how many housing units are going to go in so I can figure out how much water is coming. You know, and if I took every single, maybe we'll do this with our two hundred acres, you know, this county is going to have a hundred and fifty thousand people in it, based on, you know, how much money they think they can make. So I, I will be transparent with the commission. I do filter some of the development plans that we hear about because it serves no purpose.
I think we need to have reasonable discussions on any of your development at a point in time when, when we can make the suggestion.
And the preliminary site plan is, now, I do know, I'll give a real quick example of like today, because, you know, solar facilities, I think you're going to be talking about in just a few minutes. We had an individual today, talked to Sherry and I both, had some questions, just some other things, but indicated that, what did he say, twelve, fifteen?
Several.
All of them about the same deal as far as the leasing and the mountain. So he's talking about twelve or fifteen solar facilities that he's well aware of, and I can tell you that, that is, there is not twelve or fifteen, but if I brought all of that to the planning commission and, and everybody would just be in a constant state. But if the preliminary site plan, if someone comes in here with preliminary site plan, the minute it touches Sherry or I's hands, it becomes public knowledge and of course I would have no problem and I have hopefully done that up to this point with Sherry and the planning commission.
Well, I do think, I do think we are all on this planning commission, we're all well aware that there are somewhat developed, there's open fire and, we do know that, but until they come into applying, that doesn't.
Right.
I'm concerned, I'm not concerned. I'm concerned, I'm not concerned if they're, um, and we'll talk about that, even if, but not concerned if they're, we don't eat up pretty much of that part of it, unfortunately. All right, well, thank you all. Anybody else have anything for the comments? All right, the next item.
Mr. Chairman, Commissioners, uh, everyone. Um, so the Kingman County Plan and Commission Solar Power Subcommittee, uh, was formed. Um, I've got a donor report on your desk, which it says in very large lettered draft. And there are two, uh, appendices, uh, the ordinance itself with some changes, as well as all the comments we got from both. Uh, I have not shared it with the committee yet, uh, I should be doing that probably sometime tomorrow. Um, but basically, what we did, uh, I identified a number of citizens who have spoken for or against the sweet sue application, um, figuring that they would have, have an interest in, in making sure the ordinance was as good as it could be. Um, and we gave them a series of things to consider, got a lot of good comments back. Um, what I did as the chairman, I looked at the comments we received, where they had a proposal, where they had proposed section to be added, I put it in the draft for consideration by the full committee, where they had some concerns, but not a, not a proposed wording, I only had to put them together as well. And so the full committee met a week ago, uh, Monday night, I think it was for last night. And we had sixty-eight committee members, you know, at the meeting. But the, the full committee consisted of Yvonne Broadus, Carlon Clemens, who was formerly in the planning commission, Mr. Weyden Hughes, who's out of the audience and had some excellent comments, uh, Mr. Scott Lucy, Jayne Mills, Tommy Mundy, Charlie Piersa, and Catherine Sten, and of course, Mr. Frank, who is ex-fiscal, uh, a member, a non-member of the committee. I did not take any votes either. And we went through the draft ordinance and the proposed changes, uh, section by section. And that's appendix one. And, and you'll see where the consensus of the, of the subcommittee was to do this, was to do that. And so, so where we had a consensus, I left it in the draft, and you'll see that in your draft. And, uh, and where the consensus was not to accept change, you can still see all the changes in appendix one. Um, what I, I can do with these folks, I assume that the, that the subcommittee is okay with what I proposed, with the documents you see in front of you, and assuming you all are okay with them, I would submit to the Board of Supervisors. And the subcommittee could still continue to be in existence and should exist additional comments be received between now and the public hearings, uh, it necessary that committee would weigh in on any additional changes. If there were anyone else who had not been a member wanting to join, I'd like to keep it at, at ten active people or less than twelve at most. And we have six active and a couple folks who, who were not real active. Um, and so, uh, if you can take a moment or two, look at the report, and then if you have any questions about the three documents, uh, I'm available to answer them.
I said my question on page three of the appendix, isn't the red that says change from two to a hundred, but I guess we took the two out. It's, I guess it's supposed to be fifty-two to a hundred, instead of just two.
I think the, the draft had said two and twelve.
Okay.
And if you look at the actual ordinance, you'll see, itself, you'll see where, where the change took place.
Okay.
You'll see where two was brought through and, and a hundred.
I would notice change to fifty-two, your continue to change it to a hundred.
Yes, because you can't have a filthy gray solar farm on one two acre track.
Right, yes, I, I agree, not even allowing it at all under the twenty-one.
And I thought, and I thought that's Mr. Everett for not having gotten this to you sooner, if he's not weighed in on this, he might have a lot of negative things to say. Hopefully he won't, but, uh.
I do like the thought of increasing the, the dates in terms of notice and.
Yes. Yeah, the committee came up with a lot of excellent ideas, I thought. Um, there were some that didn't seem to be necessary, but they weren't harmful. And there were a number that I thought made it a lot better. And, and I was very pleased that I, I had a vision of how I thought the subcommittee could work, and it went exactly as I had hoped. But I had some theories that it wouldn't go that well, but it did. So, very good group of folks, they didn't agree on everything, there's, I think only one or two things that there was not general consensus on.
So, I do have one thought. Since I haven't had time to read it here at all, you know, I would like time, if you want to have any other comments. But would we want Berkeley Group to look at the draft before we send it to the Board of Supervisors? Do we think that's even necessary for them to give any other recommendations or?
Uh, I would like staff to take a look closely at it, but I, I'm not sure that Berkeley Group is going to add much to it. I've got a paramour experience with solar farms myself, having formerly worked in electric utility. Um, and, and there are a couple places that I would definitely want staff to take a look at. Um, but, but I'm, I'm comfortable that, that between what I come up with and what Mr. Everett would come up with, he should be in good shape. I would be curious, uh, if, if he knows of anyone who put together a solar farm, if they, if they saw red and if they did see red, do we care, or is it something that we should not include?
Well, uh, if I may.
Yes.
Um, to Bonnie asking of Berkeley Group, uh, Berkeley Group and I drafted the, the draft ordinance as it stands. Um, that, that pretty much came out of the conditional use permit for sweet sue, so that wasn't something they did, that was something that staff did. We've also, uh, the county attorney, uh, Sanz Anderson actually has a specialist on solar facilities, one of their lawyers is what she does. And she's actually, uh, her and I discussed it when I was coming up with the conditional use permit for sweet sue. So, most of this has been vetted thoroughly through, uh, third parties, aren't, um, any, uh, changes or additions. Uh, I noted some at the, the meeting, uh, at the committee meeting, which I attended. But the, uh, for the most part, I'd get it, there was nothing in there that, that would, uh, not stand up to legal examination. We could reinforce like any of them, that, any of the suggestions that they came up with.
Mr. Brady.
Yes.
Um, were there certain bases that the participants on the committee were relying upon, objective, other ordinances, things of that nature that you can point to that may have resulted in some of these changes or?
Uh, I don't know what sources they accessed.
Okay.
There, there's one particular that I'm sure had a professional look at it.
Okay, okay.
Um, and, and, and some of those changes were readily accepted by the rest of the, of the subcommittee. And at least one, a rather large one, uh, that's actually on the very last page, actually two, it starts on page, uh, it starts on page four and runs to page seven, that the, that the, the, the subcommittee generally proposed to reject that proposed addition. Uh, so there's one member that wanted that, and the other, the rest of the committee, subcommittee was not faithful, so it was killed. But, but again, the appendix, uh, the appendix one is designed to show you all every comment that the various subcommittee members made. And then those that the, the consensus of the subcommittee agreed to, you still see it in the, the draft ordinance. So, you're able to see exactly what they proposed and, and what the, the subcommittee as a whole agreed to put in. Uh, with a caveat, the subcommittee hasn't actually seen it yet, so, so if I'm to speak, I'm sure they'll look at it in the next two days. Um, but they, they should be getting probably some comments for it.
This is very well done.
Put a lot of time into it.
Yeah, it's clear.
Thank you.
Stephen, must we have reviewed this and paid recognition to Mr. Brady and the other board supervisors, or next president supervisors? Is there any other question that people, is there any brought to this?
Not that I don't know, but like, so if we were, maybe if there was one into the wings, I would maybe wait, but it doesn't look like there is. I don't think there is, but I mean, we still want to do it, I guess, as fast as we can.
I mean, well, one, we passed the resolution, so even if one was waiting in the house.
That's right.
That wouldn't be an issue. And, um, I believe this would be a really good, for a work session. This would definitely be.
Right, that's what I would ask you, or do we want to have the public first, or is it just between?
On the solar.
Okay, or, yeah, that sounds good, a work session with us, you know.
But I think everybody needs to have a mic to be, you know.
With, with staff comments. And, yeah. Okay. That sounds great.
So, when did you want to, this all start from this, or repeat?
Well, I'll be sending back to the full subcommittee, probably tomorrow, asking for them to get back to me within a week. Again, these are all things we already talked about, so there should be a lot of, of, of work on, on their part, just to, to rattle their collective memories to see if I correctly, uh, identified what, where we had consensus, where we did not, what we wanted to add and what we did not want to add then. Uh, and then, then they'll go back to you and say, John, you called the unions, you got on this, you updated this. Or it looks fine, at which point then, uh, and also I'll, even if you, if you all are not on the subcommittee, I'll send you all an electronic copy as well. Um, and you can then take a look at it, and, and if you have concerns, especially, not as much with the two appendices, which was worth the subcommittee.
Right.
But rather the report itself, which is not real large. Um, and, and that's the report, probably the main thing I would want you all to weigh in on, which will be going to the supervisors.
That's what, you want to have our comments on this just as?
There's a report especially, I'll, I'll send you all, all electronic copy as well.
Mr. Everett, at this point in time, do you know if I come up with a final decision?
We don't have any public hearing things, so no, we shouldn't have, uh, because they withdrew, oh, that was BCA. Got to have your money, you know, we're. Right now, it looks like we'll have no public hearings for the next planning commission, um, meeting that I can, yeah, there, there's nothing on the, on the horizon.
What's, what's the commission's preference for the, what we go to? A work session, or would you want to just wait till the next planning commission meeting and discuss it at that time? But in the meantime, send your final sentence to Brady.
I'm, I'm fine.
I don't know why.
Whatever you all prefer.
I mean, if we, if we do it in conjunction with the next planning commission meeting, I think we would need to start earlier.
The, the, my, the main thing I'm concerned with you folks is the report itself.
Okay.
Because again, the comments from the.
Right.
Uh, from the, uh, the subcommittee or the comments from the subcommittee, their, their consensus or not. The report itself can and could and probably should include the planning commission disagrees with this being in late.
Right, right.
Or, or the planning commission concurs with, with this report, uh, this is not just, this is the full planning commission report. So, that's the main thing I want you all to weigh in on, if you see something.
But I think having this information will be helpful then, before we look at the.
Oh, absolutely, absolutely. No, no, I'll be sending all through it to you, but what I need y'all's input from especially is the report itself, which is, which is our report.
That's the actual solar facilities, the twelve page one?
The two page.
Yeah, no, it's two pages.
Oh, just this one? Yeah.
Yeah, I think the, the planning, the, the planning commission.
It just says he was on the committee, so I would, what difference?
Well, I mean, the, well, with, with what I've said there, but the planning commission has looked at the comments the public has come up with and, and disagreed with them. And I'm fine with that. Uh, I expressed no opinion at the meeting, my, my role was, was to take the, the, the comments that did not have a specific change recommended and use my background to provide a proposal. And then we weighed, and then we had the subcommittee itself weigh in on whether they liked it or not, whether they agreed with it or not. And again, that one, that one thing I told you about four through seven, these, the, the consensus was not to include it. So, I took it out of, of the final draft. The actual, uh, draft ordinance includes all the changes they thought should be in there. And if you all feel very strongly, uh, against any of those comments, we can include that in the report.
I think the substantive thing that I see in your report is the subcommittee members were provided a copy of the draft order, ordinance and asked to consider whether, and there are three specific areas.
Yes.
But I don't see the conclusion of their, it's in the best, it is in the best interest of the county to continue to allow additional utility scale solar facilities as a permitted use. It just says that they were asked to consider whether, was there a response to each of these three?
Uh, there was not a response in particular to each of those three. However, uh, Chairman Wagner had a questionnaire, which I think I mentioned on here.
Okay.
Were they, were they specifically asked, should they be allowed in Kingman County?
Okay.
And, and, and that was on page, uh, on the, back on the, on the second page, the second paragraph. And there was complete consensus that they should be allowed.
Okay.
However, should there be limitations, that was evenly divided three to three, which is interesting. That was probably the one thing, uh, that there was not consensus on. Um, uh, other than that, most things were unanimous, or they generally agreed, so on and so on. That was one particular, that there, they three, three split. Um, and again, I, I basically took Mr. Wagner's question and reformulated the report format.
Okay.
In fact, in fact, uh, I think I, I should include the questionnaire as well, to be guys.
No, I promise you.
Yeah.
Thank you.
All right, any, any other questions or comments? Then, if you all would, um, review, uh, the material Mr. Brady gave you and get your comments back, Mr. Brady, prior to our next planning of the committee, and we will set aside time at the planning commission meeting to discuss this and tell them your final report for the interest of the chairman. You all agree with that?
Yes.
All right. Next item on the agenda is the comprehensive plan RFP, Mr. Everett.
Um, we have, the RFP right now is undergoing the legal part. We, they have to be a particular format, so I'm vetting it against, uh, something that I know the former county attorney had already worked up. So, I'm in the process of vetting that now, getting it in the right structure, uh, should be done by the end of the week. Then Finance and I will sit down and then we'll send it out, you know, we'll send the advertisement out to solicit, uh, bids. And, um, one of the things, uh, on that RFP, um, and I'd like to, uh, I have to sit a panel to review, um, to interview the firms. I would like a member of the planning commission to be on that panel, I believe Mr. Brady offered. Uh, but, uh, again, I'm formally asking that the planning commission appoint someone to help me do the evaluation on the products.
That's going to get back to that.
I'll take a look at all our responses, I'll probably narrow it down to a short list of three that I want to bring in for interviews. And I want a member of the planning commission on the panel for the interviews. And I'm going to get a representative from the Economic Development Board, or EDA. So, I'm planning to see one planning commissioner and one, uh, EDA, uh, member on my panel to help evaluate the applicants, or the vendors.
Alex, can you name?
Yeah, Mr. Brady has volunteered to, uh, be on that panel.
I would like to very much, if I may, Mr. Chairman, after thirty years in state government and served on, on dozens of, of RFP response committees as well as any number of personnel subcommittees as well. And so I've got a lot of experience with, with, with the qualities and the experience and whatnot, and the approaches, uh, these folks and my offers. So, I, I think I, I would bring, uh, some, some helpful background to you, Mr. Everett, I would very much like to serve in that capacity right now.
Yeah, Brady, yeah. Very much, yeah, too. If you have any comments or?
I have consensus.
Yeah, you have.
Thank you. Thank you very much, and thank you, John.
All right, the next, uh, thing we have is the reports, uh, you have any comments on any of those?
Uh, Ganielle should have had, uh. Uh, Ganielle, should have had, uh, building and land disturbance on those that wasn't, well, I didn't ever share those to watch in your packet. But that should have been left at your seats. Nothing really out of the ordinary, did want to point out that there was two, stick-built homes, there was twenty-one for the month, year-to-day were sixty-nine. And just one of the things that most of these homes are in, that are being built, are actually in the existing subdivisions. Only four this month were in the AC. Something I've started to track is the number of houses that are going up, one of the comments I got from you. Just to see how much is going up out in our AC area, outside of our utility areas, outside of the subdivisions. But other than that, really, there's not a whole lot. I look at the land disturbance, try to figure out if there's anything on the horizon. That's usually where we find out that we don't have a preliminary, but nothing of that. But if y'all see anything, I'd be happy to answer any questions. And I will encourage, when y'all get, if y'all look through these, and, and Chairman Wagner has done this for me as well, if y'all run across something, please don't hesitate to call me. I prefer y'all not to call my staff directly, but feel free to call me if anything comes up, because I do want to keep the planning commission informed and answer any questions that y'all might have.
Thank you, Mr. Rutherford. Do you typically have violation, a, a report for violations note? Or am I just making that up?
No, no, you're not, we, we do, isn't that in the packet?
No, I, I just took what was on the agenda.
And that's, and that's fine, if there's not anything, it makes a lot of the same.
We do have a law, I'll make sure y'all have it next month.
Oh, great.
We'll start including that, because I, I actually thought it was already on here.
Yes, thank you.
The violations, I will, and since you did bring that up, I, I will share that the deadline for the Conde Corr court order is Friday. And then I'm court ordered to do the site inspection on Monday the thirteenth. So hopefully that, I think that's been about a three or four-year process, but that should be ending Monday on that. And, you know, in general, Ms. Rhodes, violations are junk vehicles and weeds. There's, right now, we don't have any major, they're all major if you're the ones wanting to get it fixed. But we are, if you might have noticed, the storage boxes are gone, three sixty. You know, we get compliant, you know, I will tell you that staff, and it is at my direction, we prefer not to go to court, we prefer not to write nasty grams. We prefer to negotiate with these property owners to get compliance. It, it's much more effective, but I will tell you that we will not hesitate to go to court. And we have worked up summonses for a number of different issues in the county already, so.
Yeah.
And we believe, and we're starting to see it, people know that we're going to enforce these rules. And so compliance gets a lot easier if they know you're actually going to do something about it, so.
That's right, yeah, and I agree with you on the private.
Mr. Chairman, just a question, uh, Gerald Kelly seems to have four entries in here on the, on the one with the income balance has the blue sheet, but they all seem to have different tax models, it's the same piece of property, it's four different.
Are you looking at the law, are the ENS log, or is it land disturbance?
I don't know what it says, it's not, the monthly report, and it's not the DEQ, it's the big blue page at the top.
Yeah, okay, that's your land disturbance?
Oh, so he had to get four land disturbances for that?
If he's got four different properties, he's got to get four different land, he could be.
But it's the same address.
All four of them.
No, that's his.
Oh, oh.
He's located in six sixty-two Sharon Road.
Okay, never mind.
Yeah.
So he has a building permits from New Orleans.
But I mean, that's same thing.
The reason, so that you'll understand how this, the land disturbance works, when a developer comes in with a, for a land disturbance permit, that property ninety-nine percent of the time doesn't have an address.
Oh.
Or even a tax map number in some cases, so, yeah.
Right, they do have a different tag, now I see that, now they're all got different tags, like this particular case has one, but. And then another thing to bring in, Mr. Wagner, I've just noticed on my, the file, John, and you noticed a lot of houses down in your area, but you were saying a lot of these houses are in the subdivision. I happen to notice there, and you might have noticed it too, there are five new houses down River Road, entrances that are all these new, and I don't see them on this list at all.
Oh, they, oh, if they're already being built, and it's been done.
Was it the previous one?
Yeah, it's four months ago.
That was a question I had.
Right, there are so many, it's like, is it five entrances at least? And what did the?
I'm, I'm gonna, I'm gonna go back in time to the ordinance updates, and you asked about complaints, and one of the things that is so enormously clear, you know, these entrances going onto roads, you know, we've taken care of that in the draft ordinances, no matter which way we go with subdivisions and whatever, I think consensus throughout everybody is that we got to cut these entrances off. One of the problems I'm having when they come in for these subdivisions of any sort is we cannot allow them to limit the number of entrances. The way our ordinances are written, you can only have one flag lot. The other three lots, say in the minor subdivision, or single, whatever it is, they have to have their own entrance to the public road, it is required by ordinance. As much as we honestly sharing a deal with this every day is developed, where we would love to say, hey, why don't you do it this way? And, and to be honest, most of the developers don't want all those entrances, they would prefer to put that road through there. But, you know, our biggest thing since coming on, you know, that we try to get across is that we enforce the rules we have. And unfortunately, we have to make them have all those little nasty entrances every three.
Two, it's like, where do all these entrances come out?
And it's fire cut, and in fact, we're prohibited from limiting. We can only have one that's got, that doesn't have an entrance, we can only have one flag lot, period. The rest of them have to have separate dropways going out onto the public road.
Again, what do you think, or not a flag?
It depends, some of these subdivisions that are being built were approved ages ago, so they're buildable lots, so they could be five, seven, eight. There was one, it was twelve, I can't remember from somebody did a fan, I've got one up on the table.
How long does it permit approval, good for?
If you have subdivided a lot, and it's buildable, so you've already got your subdivision in, it's non-conforming, so there's no eclipse on the subdivision. It's kind of like with family subdivisions, depending.
We've talked about this before, I see all over the county now, houses going, you know, many size lots, that is probably a residual, like the one on six hundred on the north side, three sixty.
Right. Oh, yeah, on the corner, that looks like it's going to be done right away.
Well, I will tell you this, the number of people that have, one of our biggest complaints from developers, and I'll quote one, I will not say it, I've cut his business about forty percent. We, we've gotten a number of requests to put minors beside minors, minor subdivisions. So in those cases, even though it's a non-conforming lot as far as being, being able to be built on, you still can't put a minor by a minor, we stop that all the time. So if you see something with more than four going up, it's because they got it in as non-conforming. And, because you can, and Cherry, correct me, because you are much better at this than I am. Four lots, then you can do the exempt and single, by putting that buffer in there, you get around the minor by a minor. So I believe that if you've got enough land, you can get up to seven in the general area and still not be a major subdivision.
What kind of upper road is that?
Twenty-five acre exempt lot, or any lot, if they're not touching. The thing is, the minors can't be adjacent, they can't have a similar name, and that's really easy, developers just change the name of the second one. But it's, they're adjacent, now if they're not adjacent, they're not side by side, so you could have two minors close to each other that way.
But the lot in between.
But there's got to be something in between them.
But that lot cannot be developed?
Not with a home, but yeah, it could not, if, soon as, if somebody came in, bless you, and fix your glasses. If somebody came out to try to build on that lot between the two minors, they wouldn't, because you can't do this, at that point, you're circumventing the minor, and the same, it's not, but to keep looking at it, you just jump in. You, you would be circumventing the minor, and the fifth lot would make it a major, would require additional use.
Question, does the newly documented ordinance for minor subdivisions take care of that issue?
I believe by the time it gets to the public forum, or by the time it gets to public hearing, yes. And I do believe even our current ordinances, if they have been enforced, because I know that Ms. Graham gets tired of me going off on that residual thing, which I do not understand ever.
We send them back, yeah.
And our ordinance is very clear on what residuals are, they are supposed to be incorporated into the, and how they became. Anyway, that's, that's the past, we enforce our ordinances as they exist, they needed to be improved, and we've gotten to that point now, we probably shouldn't have that. But we will take care of some of the, the things that really were bothersome, the entrances, the multiple entrances, lack of flag lots, the way minors are done, or whatever, however we keep it up for majors. All that's going to be very enforceable, and like I said, our current ordinances, if they had been applied the way that we interpreted them, and, which has been accepted by the development community grudgingly and loudly, but they've all agreed that yes, that we are correct, because you notice we haven't been sued. And the BCA has not had a hearing on any of our decisions. And we will continue that, and, but to answer your question, yes, we're going to make sure that we can enforce it and that it's clear to the people coming in here to build. I'm almost at box town, sorry, got me started on residuals.
I just, just topics of things in the one-on-one, on one of the reports, I see school solars. Are they working on solar now at the schools, or have they?
Oh, they're, oh, you should go by and see it, over at Hamilton Homes. The panels are up, they've got wiring to do, so that, that project is, is getting pretty close. But that's gone, you know, other than issue I had with, with Department of Forestry, they took jurisdiction from any way of typical site that has some issues. But all in all, it looks like it's going really well, haven't had any disasters or anything with it. And the schools will soon be solar powered, at least during the day when it's sunset.
Do, will whatever construction we have left to do be finished before the kids go back to school?
If I read the news right, yeah, they should be finished in, they cannot be commissioning before they'll have their schools going out. I, I do believe, yes, but the, one of the issues that we had there at the beginning was security and protecting the children, and the first, the very first complaint I got was from an eight-year-old, right? Because he couldn't go to the playground for recess, and I can't remember who brought that to me, but that was the first complaint about that particular construction site, was this kid was really mad because he couldn't go out for recess. But they did, there were some issues with, you know, the soccer fields, and then COVID did, so they had, had to worry about it. But they did put the chain link up, they cut all the hurricane, so, to, you know, try to keep the site secure. And then, of course, they'll put up the security.
I was just curious.
Anyone else have anything? I've got a couple. Under the building report, the average building size down on the green, at the bottom of the page, you show the average building size of new development, or new buildings is two thousand one hundred eighty-four square feet. Is that for all sixty-nine that have been built this year?
That's going to be an average.
Yeah, that's what I'm saying, is that average for all sixty-nine?
Yes, sir.
So we had an awful lot of subdivisions that had minimum size of five hundred square feet with two floor, fifteen hundred square feet, I believe. Are the minor subdivisions, the homes, and those subdivisions larger?
Uh, well, I know that a lot of the, the subdivision houses are, because they've been built as much as stick-built, not the carriage houses, so I know that probably, because H.H. Hunt's doing all the ones down in McCully, so they're going to be full of, you know, their single families, too. Most of your, talking to a couple of the agricultural zone developers, most of their houses are getting up around the two thousand, twenty-two hundred mark, is what people are asking for.
Does the carriage house, is it faster than?
Uh, I believe the carriage houses are smaller, but.
Between thirteen and fifteen hundred.
But see, the carriage house, these were going big, great guns a couple of months ago. Right now, most of these stick builds are going in McCully, Kennington, and Central Crossing. These are going to be stick builds in the twenty-one hundred range, I would guess.
Is that considering my figures?
Smaller, the houses are getting bigger universally, if you take out the carriage houses, most of your stick builds now. The starter, the, the big push now is, you know, because lots went up a little bit, so people don't want the fifteen and sixteen. They're getting, you know, we're getting to eighteen and twenty-one, is what the people are asking for when they contract with Adams or Kellum or, or Burr.
One reason I like that, is a lot of the house, more tax, that maybe we get for those three kids.
Yeah, it's still a net loss, so.
All right, anybody have anything else? If not, I had commission comments earlier, but we also want those in comments, so Ganielle, do you have any closing comments?
No, I just want to say Chairman Breeden for all the forward work on the solar panel, or your mandate, well done.
Thank you very much.
Well, I have to thank my subcommittee, Mr. Hughes had a lot of excellent comments in some of the posts as well, so I want to thank them, and thank you all for your support and for your late and circle on the, the value issue committee for the, for the comprehensive plan, and I'm looking forward to bringing that product, and thank you for that as well.
Bye.
Oh, again, thank you, Mr. Breeden, I really like the format that you put the information together to make it readable and easy for us, I really appreciate all the effort and consultant committee. And thank you for the people that are in attendance tonight, and all the work that staff has done to put the information together. It's incredible.
So thanks, John, I did it all and everything, Colin, thank you, Chairman Beck, thank you for sitting. Chairman Breeden, thank you for sitting there also overseeing everything, staff. And I said the four people that we had, two of them, of course, had left, and I hope everybody had a nice floor. It was different, although social distancing, but thanks everybody for coming.
All right. I know I went on and on tonight, but I think the discussion we had this evening was very good, hopefully very helpful to you all. I wanted to get some of these things sort of out there before we get into the comp plan and before we finish up these ordinances. So that we, as we go forward, we may need to take our foot some of these things. Certainly need to take, you know, we have lots to put in the comp plan. I'm looking forward to it. Started on that and getting that moving here. And once we make it with consultant, we can kind of figure out, kind of the time schedule and how we're going to meet and stuff. And thank all of you all for coming down. With that, could I hear a motion to adjourn?
Make a motion to adjourn.
I'll second.
Mr. Adams?
Mr. John Breeden?
Aye.
Ms. Bonnie Height?
Aye.
Mr. Stephen Greenwood?
Aye.
Ms. Janie Rhodes?
Aye.
Chairman Don Meyer?
Aye.
And the judge.
Thank you, everyone. Okay.
This, this format here, what the, I stole it, so I didn't understand. I was one of the U.S. representatives to the highest representative manager. And this was the same form as two minor twins, for disposition comments for friends.
And you're like.
Yeah, the subcommittee response, as Mrs. Prentice has said.